Like to call this meeting to order pursuant past general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty, hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording are being made of the meeting. If anyone else wishes to record, they must let the chair know. Um, also, we have alternate. Uh, Dan Blaisdell will be a voting member this evening. Okay, um, we have minutes. Do we wanna? Table those till next meeting?
Personally, I wasn't here, so I can't vote on it anyway.
Right, so I, um.
There are a lot of Peters and, yeah.
On your table.
Dan, motions to table. Is there a second?
Sure, yes.
Okay, all in favor, Conrad?
Hi.
Peg?
Hi.
And?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, hi. Correspondence, if anybody really wants some interesting reading here, we have the decision from Lennox Board of Appeals about the, um, McGee Auto Group. The new BMW dealership that's going in, BMW Audi, I think.
You mean the one that's under construction?
Yes.
So we have the decision here?
The decision is here, um, but it's, uh.
So how's that work in Lennox? You, you get to build it first and then you get the decisions?
That sounds it, huh?
Is that the way it works or?
I'm looking at these dates, um, probably was.
Have your phone?
August, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, this goes back a ways. Yep. Um, what else is in here? Um, just one from Stockbridge. Lennox, they, a lot of their Lennox that you guys notice that, uh, their Board of Appeals seems to do a lot of their decisions, which is different. Okay, then our ADU, um, moving on, um, public comment. Kathy, you have anything for us? There she is. You got unmute, please.
Okay, okay, uh, great happenings at the Lee Library today. They had mini golf from one PM to five PM. More than forty people attended from ages two to the late eighties. Grandparents and adult families as well. The event was sponsored by the Lee Library and its staff who helped anyone who needed assistance. The check-in and checkout places were at the front door. The mini golf started at the gallery and proceeded to the children's room, then to the aisles and ended at the adult teen room. And it was set up so in the gallery, there were three lanes. In the children's room, there were two lanes at one of the doors and a single lane at the other door. In the aisle, there was one lane and at the youth adult or teen room, there were two lanes. Um, everyone had a blast. The staff plans to continue this event, so stay tuned. Thank you. That's it for today.
Thank you, Kathy. Um, any other public comment? I don't think so. Uh, this point, we have a four A. Five ninety Maple Street. I'm gonna go to the other side of the table and I'll put Conrad in charge. You're in, I think so. I.
We'll help you.
Peg, you can help him?
I'll help.
All right.
Uh, my name is Patrick Napoleon on the land surveyor, which has been the thing of them here. What he's proposing to do is to cut off a lot from a larger piece of property. Uh, it's on Maple Street. On, uh, north side. And on the, just on the west side of Ass Pike. Where the tension lines come down. Okay, so the frontage would be here. It's a hundred and twenty-five feet.
You need a hundred and twenty-five required?
Yep, it's got a hundred and twenty-six. It diverges as it goes back. You've got a hundred and twenty-six and the diverge where it comes back. Got plenty of area.
So it meets the area requirements, it meets the fines requirements. Uh, you can have access.
It's prob, yeah, most likely it's gonna come from there because this looks fairly steep here, but it's gravel. There's nothing, there's no physical impediment like a cliff or something.
Intention is to come off of East Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know well.
Yeah.
All the, all the other driveways here and the houses come straight back.
That classy, um, this triangular piece right here, it would be right here.
That triangular piece is actually owned by somebody else.
The tax records, it shows he owns it.
Oh, I understand that, but I, but I actually came up with somebody else owning it.
Really?
Oh, yeah, it goes way back when they took it for the bike.
About that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna come and get a pay for that?
No, we'll just take it off the tax, take it off the taxes, I think of this.
No, just for some reason that I looked it up and.
I couldn't find a current owner for it. But you'd have to go through Prograte. It would be, there would be something to try and figure out who owns it today. So nineteen fifties. It was the last time I had an owner for it.
Cause it has a little Z.
Yeah, well, that, when we were doing this, that's what we figured would, you know.
And that's part, they thought.
That is the frontage and I'm like, oh, that'll be, but I mean it, with the power lines, it really didn't.
How far away from the bridge is this?
I'm gonna say it's probably like, I don't know, three or four hundred feet.
At least, I was closer to five hundred. It.
Five hundred, so it's kind of the base before you start going up the hill there?
Yeah, you know that the old?
That red house that used to have the Christmas tree, that red and white house?
Well, that's down below, but there, there used to be like a, uh, four-wheel drive pickup smoke that used to go up there. It's just past that.
Okay.
Is where the frontage is coming from.
Okay.
Yeah, that. That four-wheel drive jump was, I know, here. I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
No, after the gate, I'm not sure what he's talking about, but I, I recall if it's three rocks and. Yeah, there's three rocks there now, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Uh, one other question. The, the address, you calling this as five ninety Maple Street? Because that's where the frontage is.
I, I actually don't know how you got the address on that because it's, I think it's vacant land, right?
It is, yeah.
It just seems like.
And usually you don't have an address with the vacant land.
The successive numbers would make sense. But then if the entrance is gonna be down there, should that be an east street exit, uh, address?
I don't think so.
Cause the next sequential number on that would be ten east street.
That, that'll actually be up to the, you know, the building department when they apply for the permit to build. This doesn't make it a total block. They still have to jump through all the huts of conservation, all the other stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So as that process filters through, we probably given an address.
Yeah. Like I said, we, uh, it seems to be, oops, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just asking what zone this was then.
It's. See, uh, see, uh, huh?
No, it's, uh.
You have a question, Dan?
Oh, sorry.
Like.
I'm all set.
Um, the water's required, uh, area, you got the required frontage. You have an access by other twenty-five feet over there. So everything does seem to be compliant. I'll make a motion if you accept it.
I'll second that if you'd like by.
Think you have to read that, yeah.
The surveyor and the date.
The court's with the plan provided by Town Plan Insultance. Did.
November twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four.
November twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four. Any other comments, questions?
Nope.
All in favor?
Hi.
Peg?
Hi, welcome, hi.
Dan?
Hi.
Conrad Decker?
Hi.
Little sign of my line?
There we go.
They always sign as many copies as you're gonna move it.
We know.
Kind of want to get it off like four or five, four ones.
It's actually.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
You sign it?
Anyway.
No, not yet, but I will.
No, not on this one. Actually, my partner did more than a few work.
Yeah.
I did it all the last week, this one. How many copies do you need, please?
Nothing.
The four copies? You.
I need four. You can keep.
Sorry, get the ink down there, I'm sorry. Oh, wow. When they would make the decision, it's in part.
The data, you can move in there, gets caught up.
It is twenty-third?
Twenty-third, yep.
Thank you.
This is my last plan, don't need this in a year.
Yeah.
Good, show on the line.
There we go.
Yeah, Conrad, this, he came up with a Clark. As the last.
I didn't want to talk to you, talk to Chris too.
So I was wondering if that's Rodney's parents, uncle, something like that.
You get the piece across the street too, right?
There's a little, little.
Triangle piece?
Triangle piece.
That was left over when they whacked the change in the road. Yeah, it was a two acre piece at one time.
What's, what's the resulting piece there left?
Probably not even like a half or something like that.
Yeah.
I don't know, is it considered building lot?
No, I don't think so.
I don't know, I'd have to see how big it is, but it'd be, I mean, I don't know if you would wanna live there. But you got the turnpike, power lines and east street, you'd be right in the middle.
And the neighbor's already using it.
There you go.
Yeah.
You get what the oil takes behind it.
No, he's, he's talking, there's a little.
Oh, on that side?
Yeah. Well, the, uh, the other side.
Okay, on the other side.
They have a place to park.
Yeah, that's, that's actually owned by the, uh, turnpike.
Yes.
When they read out the rope, but it's not limited to access.
It's pretty interesting, the, what the turnpike still owns.
Oh, yeah, that's a good sized piece.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they did that so they could be aligned it and do what they had to.
They also, whatever good material they.
Oh, probably, there's no doubt.
They just did a big.
Yeah, thanks for the grant.
Yeah. Okay, there's ours.
Thank you, that was a session.
Thank you.
You too.
I'll let you know on.
Yeah, love to be on your, love to be on your, if you want.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll, you know, be, be, yeah, I'm, right, and you just.
Hey, thank you. And I'm back.
Welcome back.
You're awesome. Oh, I like that one. I'll take that. Um, next up, um, gentleman from CTSB. So here's the conundrum we ended up in.
Sure.
When we, you guys presented and you approved, um, you had a design and the location of your antenna was on the middle or far end of the building, if I recall. And then when you presented, when you sent our, your paperwork, it showed it close to the property line, which with our bylaw, the fall distance, it puts it over the property lines. We really can't do that.
Uh, the original, the original drawing shows it on the right side of the building. And then the one I sent you guys, same spot.
Yep, but when, when, when you were presented and approved, it was the, what you, you were showing us was further down the building. From the other side.
Originally. Originally, originally it was in the back of the building. I think when Kurt was here, he told you guys that the, the, um, the ground there wasn't settled. It was too loose and hilly. And he talked about the plans being moved to the side of the building. So I know, I know we talked extensively about, about the plans changing to over here, because within these plans that I submitted.
Well, we did not have a site plan at the time to demonstrate the actual locus of the, of the tower. So then basically what we did is we reviewed the plan and indicated that it was a very complex uh, zoning bylaw that affects these kinds of towers. And we were basically granting a lot of waivers of those requirements because you're not talking about a, you know, three hundred foot cell towers. We're talking about a, well, a, uh, Eppen Tower that's fifty-six feet tall. Not that big a deal. There's, there's a lot of reasons we could grant waivers of that. So we did grant the waivers of that under the special permit. And once it was described verbally where the tower's gonna go, it just has to meet the requirements of that, uh, particular section of the code. And we said, okay, as long as you provide us with a, a, uh, a site plan that demonstrates the position of the tower relative to the property lines, then we can, you know, it'll finish up the application. So then we got your, the plan.
Yep.
And I mean, we, we look at this plan. That dimension from there, there's forty-one feet. That dimension from there, there's seventy-two feet.
Yeah, cause there's no, there's no pins and we would need a land surveyor to, to complete something like this. And the engineers said we, that's not, that they don't do that, so.
No, right, right, but that's what we were saying. We needed a, a, uh, a demonstration of where the building, where the tower relative to the properties, property lines were.
Yeah.
Because again, we refer to the code that your engineer should be working from. And there's a provision in the code that shows that the height, the height of the tower, in this case fifty-six feet, if it ever fell over, it can't go over an abutting property line. It can't go over a, a budding uh, right of way or a town road. So I mean, we all know the property. We know that it's not gonna hit the road. If it hits your building, that's your business. But we at the time did not have a plan that showed and demonstrated where the property line was to the, you know, basically to the south. Okay, then when we got your plan and then we saw where the property line was, like that's it. That's the property line. We checked the records, town records, and when you look at it, it looks like you guys own that property. Because it looks like it's all clear and all that, but turns out, I guess the town owns the one piece and somebody else owns the other piece. So then when we, we laid it out, the red, the red circle is the drop zone if the, if the tower ever fell over. The code says the, the setback has gotta be at least one point two five over hundred and twenty-five percent of what the, the drop would be. So that's the blue line. So you can see both lines, the drop zone as well as the, the required one twenty-five, uh, actually goes over that something properly a lot. So we were probably remiss and we know you guys kept coming back when we tried to work out some, some sort of combination here. Just get us a, a site plan that showed us where the tower's gonna be above to the property lines and we'll be okay. Then you guys set that plan and we go, oh crap, I mean, so it needs to move to another part of the property.
It, yes, it does.
The server look on the north side of the.
That'd be perfect.
Remember the contract that you're building this radio?
Yep.
You've probably seen this room before.
I have. I mean, if it was on the other side of the building, if that's possible.
Yeah, I mean, it, it depends what the professional engineer says about, about.
I mean, that, it would be no problem.
Right, we'll have to talk with that engineer again to see about, tell them that location we're in. We use that drawing, we'll use that circle you have and tell them it cannot go in this area.
Yeah.
Take, take that with you. That, that shows you what the problem is.
And, and we, we were really trying to get you guys going and, and we, you know, use some liberties that maybe we shouldn't have and we, we, we need to, we want, you know, we want, it's, it's just a fifty-six. It, you know, our bylaw was written when, when all the cell towers were going up. So everybody freaked out and this is, but this is what we have to work with now, so.
Lots of times if, if we have a, a large commercial development coming in, I mean, we wanna see the, uh, the impact savings. We wanna see a, a narrative. We wanna see uh, engineered plants, stormwater management. We need to see all those things, you know, meets and bounds of the property. You know, we always require that, but this ain't that big a deal.
Yeah, it just, if it falls over, it can't go on the neighbor's property.
It's what it really comes down to.
What it comes down to.
Or, or, I think that's very square way.
Yeah, that's all we're asking. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the land kind of dropped off quickly.
Yeah, so possibly the other side of the building, I, I know.
Of course, if it's on the, on, this north side of the building here.
It'd be totally.
Right, for you guys, it doesn't make a big difference as far as the actual build of the station. Just run the transmission line across the side of the building and set, yeah, it's not a good.
Okay.
Just give us a plan. It shows again the, the precise location of where the tower placement's gonna be, the foundation, oh, it's gonna be. And again, what we did here, just show the radiuses. And refer back to the code. I mean, it specifically says that.
Yeah, the one eighty-nine, but whatever.
Yeah, it's the height, hundred fifty-six feet times one point two five, and that gives you the drop zone on where this should go, just so we can demonstrate. It's not gonna go over the street right away. It's not gonna go to the east, the south, the north. Just, it's gotta show that.
Correct, correct.
Um, we apologize, but.
Don't need to apologize. We're here, we're all working together on this.
Yep.
Yeah, just to, just submit a sheet like this, or would you like it embedded into the original plans? With, with.
Like, you know, which revise what you have.
Yeah, if you revise that, I think we'd be fine with that. Something to put in the folder.
Yeah, your details on the engineering, I mean.
Yeah, the, the engineering's way beyond us. That, that we're, we're above zoning, that's the building official.
Tower and the drop zone, that's, that's what it comes down to. If you can demonstrate it on, just go to the, uh, GIS in the, in the, uh, the town, on the GIS, and that's where this came from, that's where.
Yeah, and there's, yeah, we don't need a survey exact within the inches.
Picture it's.
Yeah. And, uh, submit it or come back to the planning board, uh, next month, or what would you prefer?
If you get it to Brooke and it looks good, we, we would be good with that. Yep, okay.
Just so you can put it on the agenda.
Sure.
Yeah, but we, you know, we needed to be able to discuss, discuss this, so that's why it's on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, excellent.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, thank you. Yeah, sure, why not? Wrap it up again to the professional engineer and say, hey.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, Brooke, what do you have for us?
Yeah, not, not too, too much. So just to pick updates, what I've been doing, uh, the last couple of weeks, uh, Chris and I met with the Collins Center about, for the affordable housing trust, starting to getting that ball rolling. Um, I met with three other software programs, we're in STR licensing, we're in the process of narrowing down possibilities and see when we can get that going. So hopefully, uh, within this next year calendar year, hopefully we'll be able to have a program up and running. Um, so that way our STR licensing will be easier to do, to use, to monitor than worst.
Are you, are you gonna be the one handling that?
Then be part, right? So the clerk's gonna take the registration fees.
Yep.
And register them. I'll be monitoring it and fortunately we'll be with Matt Collins who there is already.
Do we have a worksheet, uh, application sheet for that? Yeah?
Not so sure if we do. We should with the town clerk, I believe at least one person.
Yeah.
Has applied, I think we've had a couple.
Yeah.
TRs, um, we don't have a lot, but we're working to find a program that will not only identify where our STRs are, but also then, you know, have an actual program of how to, how to continue monitoring them and then also know how to reach out to them in case they're not in compliance or in case they don't know they're not in compliance, in case they don't know that, you know, we have a bylaw passed.
What's that do? Just go through the, the plat, the different platforms?
Yeah, a lot of them will just scan every single platform, because there's more than just Airbnb and, and Turbo, yeah. So they'll scan all of them and then they will use AI to try to identify the most likely because these, these postings don't have the addresses. They'll match it up with our town assessor data. Try to pinpoint what address it is and also find, uh, based on the tax records, the owner's information, so that way we can reach directly at them. Because people might, they just might not know, they might not be informed. We don't want vague assumptions and a hundred people that just simply don't know. So, you know, starting off with a warning letter and then say, hey, just so you know, we have this new, you know, hundred dollar licensing fee, please come in and get licensed. Then if you don't hear back, then we can talk other steps too. This is the very front end of that, that's like a long-term goal. So I've been working and I've been narrowing down. I think I met with seven or eight different software companies, what they can provide and their differences. Um, so hopefully soon we'll have, um, a narrative down, you know, this is the program we're gonna go with that will work internally in town hall. Um, did you, I also met with other thing, called other towns references, um, regarding their short-term rental systems and their licensing systems as well to see, you know, so I'm not just doing it based off of their, um, pitch. I've been doing some research with the backend to talk with different towns and municipalities, different states as well, to see what they're working and how they like it.
And you're, you're getting some kind of response from them?
Yep, I talked to the town of Bow, New Hampshire. She was super positive about one of the platforms, kind of Searsport, Maine, town of East Granby, Connecticut. Um, and I did a couple emails with North Andover, I believe, um, but not a lot of people yet have, have short-term rental plans, um.
Anybody locally, Lennox, you know, Stockbridge?
Lennox uses Granicus as a software. Um, personally, when I did their demo, didn't really like it and as far as I'm aware, I don't really know too much what they're doing, but, um, there's different programs that I'd rather use instead of, instead of theirs. They're the only one that I know that has a specific software to monitor short-term um, locally. So, yes, I've been working on that. I also met with Emma SASS, who's the regional coordinator of the new school vulnerability preparedness program for the state, um, with Chris Britton to, um, discuss, uh, an MVP grant. And, uh, to, um, have a grant for the public safety building. But it's a, it's a tough grant that we did not achieve last year, so we're trying that again this year. Um, I also met with Scanzka and Atlas regarding public safety building. Again, um, I'll be continuing on those, getting the bi-weekly updates. Um, I almost, I'm, I'm almost complete with the Nash Trails Grant regarding that one hundred Stockbridge Road property. Um, so hopefully we'll be able to get some money for design work of the ADA portion of the road. That's the goal of this grant. I'm sorry, not road, the trail, but we want to be ADA accessible. Um, this portion specifically is the one that goes from basically the entrance of Stockbridge Road down towards Long Pope, but it's, it connects the two, um, neighborhoods. That's our goal. Um, because really Long Pope itself isn't really fit to be ADA accessible. The existing trails that we have, the existing topography, it's a little too rough, um, too much roots, too much pitching here and there. Um, the ratings are very great, but this property that we acquired definitely had potential to be ADA accessible, which would be great. It's within a mile of our EJ community, um, hits a lot of marks, so it'd be really great. So I'll be working on that. And that is due to the beginning of February, so hopefully we'll be able to get that completed soon. Um, also due to the beginning of February is a community IT grant, which we're gonna use for scanning all of our zoning files. Any more files? So we'll have all of those. Hopefully they get awarded that in a drive and it'll be a lot easier if somebody calls me up asking for, you know, this information on this property from nineteen ninety, I'm not gonna have to spend days looking through files that are organized very well. I'll be able to search it up in my, you know, database and it'll be a lot more efficient.
We have anything as digital, digitally other than.
Everything that I've worked on, everything since twenty twenty-one, for the most part, what Beth and I have done, that's all online. Anything before that, it's not.
Yeah, before that, everything's just a paper.
Yeah, and it's organized either by last name or it's sometimes the property name, sometimes it's the address, sometimes it's the business name, so it's not really organized very well right now, which is why when some people ask for information, it takes a while. We gotta some. So.
So is the, is the goal just to digitize the eight, F, eleven texts?
Yes.
Of the forms?
And the maps and everything, everything that we have.
So you gotta scale them down.
Yes. But we'll keep, obviously we're gonna keep everything, especially our hardcore, hard copy maps. Um, but you know, have especially all of our applications, um, any zoning enforcement. I mean, we used to have, I so many drawers full of, of just zoning enforcement, um, you know, mandates from.
And how, and how are you organizing that by lot or?
I'm probably gonna do address.
Address.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause sometimes, and I will tell you this too with our GIS, so like I put five ninety Stockbridge Maple, that's where GIS said to that property, or GIS.
It's across the street.
Yeah, so we kind of, so I do apologize about that. It's been, um, we're working to get that fixed. It got an update and some things got messed up and they're still not fixed right now, so I will see. So I will say your GIS is not super, um, ominous, so my.
Melt it up and.
My apologies for that. That was before I realized the problem with GIS. So I've been su- I've, I've been double checking a lot of things we've been getting and just making sure. Um, just even some of the owners aren't correct on the GIS, but the assessor is working to get them fixed. Let's see, I've also started drafting proposed bylaws for the potential Parks and Rec Committee, um, just started that this week. So hopefully I didn't meet with, with Kathy and Chris, um, so we're all in agreement for that and we'll get that all rolling. Um, hopefully in the new year, we'll be able to, I'll be able to make a proposal to select for, for the recommendation of creating a Parks and Rec Commission. And that commission will do a lot more of the actual, um, maintenance of the parks and our trails or forests, and the youth commission will focus a lot more on the programming, um, and the playgrounds. Um, anything that is more, the goal of anything that's more than just, um, the youth, so, um, even like tennis courts and basketball courts potentially will be going to Parks and Rec Commission. Whereas anything that's youth-focused, youth-centric, especially the programming, will skip with. Uh, so hopefully we'll just help alleviate that and, you know, the work hand in hand. Uh, also we'll, we'll be working with the Conservation Commission too to kind of parcel out what are the different, um, necessities of, of the Conservation Commission versus can the Parks and Rec Commission do invasive?
Is the Parks and Rec Commission or Parks and Rec Department?
Commission.
So the commission would be set of citizens?
Yes.
You'd be dealing with that.
Correct.
In.
Under Land use.
In your language.
That's the proposal.
But department-wise and the maintenance of these facilities, that would still be a DPW function?
Yeah, DPW would still have a hand in it and so would Land use.
Well, the funding would come through DPW.
We haven't really talked about that yet. TPD for that, um, you know, it, that, that's a part of working through what DPW already has, meeting with DPW yet, but I have not met with DPW yet about that. When Kathy, um, going to be meeting with the Conservation Commission, hopefully soon they'll talk to them about it as well. Um, and then I also, and I definitely I'll talk about this the next meeting, it will be, um, I've been working on, uh, doing research on Bradfields. But also we got a, recently an interesting email, um, from someone suggesting potentially creating a mill over the district for a zoning. Um, just to kind of make a new, make a new, um, zoning area that could potentially have impacts on grants and impacts on, on different ways, you know? Our, our, our mill areas are already kind of different than our other zoning areas that they're in, especially with the reuse, which was the mill reuse district. Um, I want to know if you guys are interested in getting more information on that, picking your brain on it. I haven't asked this person, I forget, I think they're from Western Mass of something or other. They were, um, asking Chris questions on, on one of the mill properties. Um, but we have several mills in the, I mean, one of them we still own, which is on Forest Street, the town actually owns that property by.
It's a mill problem, isn't it?
Westfield River.
Yeah, yeah, mountain mill.
Oh, the mountain mill.
So kind of.
In the lagoons.
You know, and how to, how to, how are we treating that area more differently?
Just, most of it would still fall under A-Rod, right? We could. So I'm not sure how a mill overlay would be different.
If you guys were interested, I could reach out to him and ask for some sample bylaws at the town.
Yeah, if we could look at it, see if it.
I just want to see if you're interested in the possibility of that. I don't want to throw anything more on our.
I think between, between forty R and A-Rod, we might cover it, but we'll always look at it.
Yeah, I'll see if I can come in.
Sure, get, get some information to look at first.
Yeah, I can ask for some sample bylaws and what towns, um, he's worked with that have, have no overlay districts. Just in case you're interested. Uh, and then also I've completed two additional CPTC trainings.
What else have you been doing?
Why? Give minutes for any agendas and posts.
And not, she's not answering the phone if you've tried to call.
All right.
Uh-huh.
Okay, I will tell you all, since it's on record, my phone, we have.
Right here.
Yeah, it's on record.
No, but.
My phone is upgraded to the newest system, but we have an error with it right now. So all of my phone calls go straight to voicemail. I'm not ignoring anybody, I promise. As soon as I see a voicemail come in, I'll call you back. But until that gets fixed, hopefully soon, we're working on it. Um, it will sound like I'm ignoring everybody, but I'm not, and I'm there. But if you're worried about it, you can also send me an email and I can give you a call.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
You may be able to put call forwarding on.
I try. I also try to change my voicemail too to say, I'll call you back. And I'm not the land use assistant anymore, but until the whole system gets upgraded, I'll be able to do those things.
Frustrating.
We're making it work, so, you know, I'm, everyone's leaving voicemails, I'm being. But just for you guys that get in contact with me constantly, please know that I'm not ignoring you. And if you want to send me an email first and ask me to give you a call, I can call you available. I'm pretty good with monitoring my email, especially for my key players. Uh, but I believe that that's everything. If you have any questions for me or anything else that you want to talk about.
Just quickly on the, um, bylaw stuff.
Yes.
You know, I missed meeting two weeks ago.
Yep.
And watched it on the CTSB, just keep upping that. It sounds like there's a revision has been put together for the meeting.
Ours or our bylaw or the state ADU?
No powers.
This was Peter's most recent.
His appointment.
As he sent this to me after, uh, our last meeting. So I got this sent this last, not last one, it was the one day before.
Okay, so I think I might have that one.
Okay, if you need an extra, I have plenty of them printed out.
So I guess what I'm wondering, I, okay, I missed the meeting, I'll listen to what was discussed. If I have any comments on that, should I, is that word, is it word or is it?
Yeah, it's word. Yep.
Maybe I should just track chain some thoughts and send them off to Brooke and Peter.
Yeah.
Yep.
Can't do it to everybody, but just.
Right, those two you, you could, right?
Just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, or if you, um, a good avenue might be just to have a conference with Peter be- before you shoot those to him, say, hey, this is, this is what, how, what, because there was, you, you know how it is. There's always a, a, how, how did we come at that?
Right.
You know?
Yeah, that's what I tried to get out of the CTSB.
Yeah, yeah.
And then Gordon got in, got in on part of it.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, I just, I'm trying. I'm watching this thing on the screen and I got my sheet out here. I'm trying to follow it, but then as you guys are talking about it, I'm
Right.
Two weeks ago, I'm kind of following along. There's no, no, I gotta go. Why? So why did we do that? Just. Yeah, it's, it's small stuff.
But maybe it just, probably a discussion might go over better than, than a full markup.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I also should say before I'm completely done with my planning report, because this is a kind of segue to the next topic, is that the state, um, comments are due January tenth. Our next meeting is scheduled to be January thirteenth.
Yep.
So if we wanted to have a special meeting, maybe the week before, which would be January sixth.
That's why I did ADU.
The ADU, yeah.
And this, I think, I believe I printed out the, um, the ADU. And I also did print out that the state did respond and accept our ADU. It's in our correspondence. Except basically they were saying, make sure that your perking does not contradict one another. Um, one thing is that we are working with ECO to codify our current bylaws, the ones that we all submitted. But they do cost money every time that we do that. It kind of is like one billing cycle. We do once or twice a year, I believe twice, but don't quote me on that. I'm still new to the whole ECO thing. Um, but also kind of what the AG letter said, from what I understood, was this all might be nullified as soon as, you know, the state passes their ADU. Uh, so I think that maybe we should wait to codify our bylaws, um, with our newest ADU amendment until the state passes. See what you change.
February there, so the tenth, um, we could just, yeah, we could quickly, the tenth is when they want all comments. Our regular meeting would be the thirteenth. So I was wondering if we could do something the sixth, maybe. Get your calendar out there, Dan. Yeah. And, and the only thing on that agenda would be the ADUs. Just come in to talk about that so we can get comments out.
Usually get comments out to the state.
Yep.
That, not us preparing revision for the, uh, meeting.
Just our comments on what they're proposing.
And then a meeting on the thirteenth and then one on the twenty-seventh.
Oh, good point. Um, we'll see what the business is like. We, we, if there's nothing else, we might.
Did you see anything coming up?
We do have something coming up. I, um, need to clarify whether or not that we need to post in the paper.
Right.
For January thirteenth, but it needs to get pushed out. We also have our zoning bylaws and, and state ADU bylaws also are getting off the agenda too.
Yep.
Hypothetically, we haven't done any.
I think for January, we do the sixth, just for ADUs and then, uh, what would it be, the twenty-seventh for all other businesses?
Oh, that's a good idea.
That's the only thing that's come, yeah.
What do you remember?
I don't know if I can stay over the meeting law.
No.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that was critical?
That, that was the only piece of business. Besides the, the sign report will be in the first meeting along with my report.
Right.
And then minutes.
So we want to say January sixth, six, six P M?
Six P M.
Our next regular meeting will be January twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
Yeah, I think we, we probably will have to post for that amendment, won't we?
Because it's different.
Because it's different, it's a change, yeah. Just to be safe.
Yeah.
Yep.
And so the, I should also just want to clarify with ECO, when I say codify, that means ECO publish our bylaws on our bylaw website. It doesn't mean that we haven't accepted that. Um, because the, the last meeting, Peter asked me to get everyone updated as the bylaws.
Yeah.
Um, and we just hadn't codified. I think it was six different amendments that we made. So we're working on getting that was passed through this amendment that wasn't yet accepted by the AG, was not on that list.
Yeah, I don't think I'd put that on because we're going to be changing it right away.
You might change.
Yeah, that, that's what, that's what Chris and I thought, but I wanted to keep you guys in the loop.
We just, we just did it. Now we.
And now you get it. Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I mean, it's funny that you, we, you heard rumors of the state doing an AD, ADU legislation. And it's just like everything else from the state. Oh, yeah, yeah. We've been hearing that for years. They actually did it.
And then as soon as our, um, we're still waiting to hear back on, on the validation from ECO that they did receive and then that updated timeline. But as soon as that's all codified and actually updated thoroughly and like integrated into our current bylaws, not just in the new law section, which is where all of our current amendments that pass that meeting are, um, I'll be able to get a copy for you all.
Okay.
Good.
But that might just be.
So what's the plan here now? We're working on a bylaw revision. We might get that in from May, our meeting.
Yep, which I think we pretty close to finished it up the other night.
Pages?
Huh?
I think there's two pages left.
Yeah. But the ADU, we have to get comments in.
Um, to the state?
To the state by the tenth. The, uh.
Were they going to respond back by?
Well, they'll come out with their final draft, I think, first week of February. So that means we got to jump right on our ADU bylaws, so we have it ready for May.
That's ex- that's for the anticipation that the state is going to get their draft or it's going to be the final.
Dave?
Who knows?
I, I keep hearing February is going to be all the regulations.
Well, that's good.
It's not just us, it's all towns.
All towns, the whole, yeah, statewide.
Yeah.
So we want to be in a position to get that incorporated into our bylaw at the same time for the town meeting.
Right, we're going to have what we have now and the comments, we'll have a pretty good idea where we're at. And what needs to be tweaked in ours. I, I don't think rewrite our whole thing, just change some sections of it. Now our square footage is off a little bit and our special permits, certain things we can't.
We can't too.
Require a special.
Right. I did include, um, the state draft in the packets and I think I also did print out Peter's as well, Peter's comments. We can't vote on that. We'll have to do a vote to accept them on, on behalf of the planning board to then send us a unified group. But anyone on their own can send their own comments as well, just not identifying the, the county thing.
Going to a unified, don't?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, um, we'll do some. I know Berkshire Regional had some comments also that they're putting in.
Yeah.
So.
Is Peter seeing those?
What's that?
Has Peter seen the Berkshire County ones?
Not sure.
Don't move.
I don't think so.
And even the whole bylaw change that we're talking about, revisions, it's still going to require a public hearing.
Right.
For, by us.
By us.
Before it goes to the warrant.
Right. Yeah.
So we'll do.
We'll get there.
Yeah, we do the public hearing probably sometime early, early April. That'll give us time to have it on the warrant. I mean, we've, we've done it like the week before, our meeting, so.
Um, you know, Mark was on some of that discussion two weeks ago. Has he been following right along with us at this point?
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I know he usually has a lot of comments on this.
He will.
There's some changes here.
Usually comes in right at the end.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Which is tough, but he's been, this one, he's been right with us, so, so it's been good, yeah. So that's been very good. Yep. Okay. Um, you all set? Um, Peg, Community Preservation Committee, I understand you are.
Well, I'm, I don't mind joining it again for one more year. I mean, for this year. Now, if somebody else wants to do it, and it's still at three thirty, Dan, the time is still three thirty in the afternoon. I'm just passing that along.
So I guess what Peg's saying is she's looking to, um, relinquish her spot in the Community Preservation Committee.
Well, not now.
Not right now, in a year.
Yeah, and after, when I get off, I'll be glad to.
So if anybody's interested in it.
Yes, yes.
I, I will say that, um, I can tell you what the members are comprised of right now, if you're interested in the board. So it's a, a member from the store commission, the youth commission, planning, county authority, conservation, and then three public members.
Yeah.
So we're entitled to have someone. We don't need someone, but the forum is, it's a nine-member board, so the forum is five. And, um, we're entitled to have a member to represent the.
And this year, um, they have a particular person that takes the notes and sends them out to all the members. So it's very easy when I get the minutes to read, to read the notes and, um, she seems to be very, very efficient and does a great job. So I'm really happy they decided to do this. Um.
Who's the chairperson?
The chairperson is Tom Logston. Um, he lives up by Teresa Terrace, Tim and Tom. Um, probably know them.
It's the last name?
Tom La- Logston.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, um, and also more, when we got into this, we thought it was going to be a fifty-fifty uh, situation, and it's become less because so many towns in the Commonwealth are signing up and therefore there's less money or less amount of money to give to the different places. But they have wonderful, um, things coming up and they'll continue on and I'm really pleased. I believe it's either here.
Yeah, I believe it's either here or it's in your packets, what they just voted on.
Yeah, and they voted on to keep going and.
For the year.
Yeah, wonderful things. So. But if somebody else, I mean, eventually, yeah, wants to do it. I'm more than happy to relinquish it and. I don't mind doing it one more year. But if anybody wants to come sometime, and I mean, I don't go to all the meetings, so I'll admit that.
What day of the week is it?
Pardon me?
What day?
I don't go to all the meetings, but I read everything and I can certainly refer it back to you guys.
What day is the meeting?
Tuesdays.
Tuesdays at three thirty?
Yeah.
Here?
Um, yeah, yeah.
How long do they usually last?
Ah, a while. It depends on what's on the agenda, Dan. Sometimes it's long, sometimes it isn't. Is it Monday or Tuesday?
It's monthly, right? It's month to month or is it?
Well, hopefully it will be, but as time goes on in the future, it gets, well, whatever. So.
Do you have any other questions I can get?
Yeah, there's plenty of time to get through. So.
I wanted to provide everyone with the projects for this upcoming year and then try to track it off.
Yeah, and they're wonderful, um, projects are coming up, wonderful projects. I think they'll be a betterment to the town and hopefully we'll get them all.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's interesting.
All right. Thank you, Peg.
You're welcome.
The. Next two items, I think we're going to put off till next.
That sounds good to me.
Because we don't have key members of our board.
I know.
Can we have a, a motion to postpone? Close to the agenda? Two items?
Motion.
The Georgia one.
I'll make a motion to. Sure. Postpone the.
Oh.
Discussion of residential planning and state A D Us.
I'll second that. Be happy to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Go ahead.
Keep us from getting recruited.
I know. Keep us going.
Good job, bro. Yep. Um.
Good though.
No, no other topic for me. Make a motion to adjourn. So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.